...meeting of March 13th at the Willetts City Council's order. At this point, I have to relax. Please join me in the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the first order of business is roll call.
Councilmember Connie, here. John, here.
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Here. All right. Public communication. The council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes or per person so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard. To expedite matters and avoid repetition, whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request a spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council commissions, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. No action shall be taken. And, you know, again, we try to kind of educate folks as we go along. If you wanted to come here and speak about Trump's wall, that's not under our jurisdiction, so we really wouldn't want to, not to say waste time, but it's not relevant to what we do here at the city. If you want to talk to something about the dog park or something, that is under our jurisdiction as long as it's our dog park. So, at this point, I'll see if anybody from the public would like to speak, and if so, step forward and state your name. Okay. The gentleman there, and then the ladies.
My name's Dan Lewis, and I made my wife home six and eight man away. We've been there for 39 years. And I understand that, well, they're going to put an MTA bus stop behind our house. They've cut the vine out. They've already started doing everything. They haven't talked to anybody in the neighborhood about it. And I don't understand why they're moving it from up by Glenn's Tire Fifty-Yards down the road behind my house, and it's stuffed in the bushes there. And I walk the streets every day on my walk, and I walk all around everywhere, everywhere in Willetts. And I've noticed a lot of the people that the MTA bus stop attracts isn't the people that are riding the bus. And I have five grandkids, and it's something that I wouldn't want them, the people, not the bus riders, the bus ones that hang out there, looking over my fence at my granddaughter's bedrooms and stuff. And I have five grandkids, and they all play in the backyard. It's all set up for them. Their hot tub, their playroom is right at that spot. And I worry about bringing something in like that, and I fear for my family. You know, hypodermic needle over the fence, garbage is going to be thrown over the fence. And my son lives right next door, and he has two pit bulls. And so, one's a 110-pounder, one's a 90-pound. Beautiful dogs don't bother nobody, but if someone sees over the fence that they can steal a weed eater or a chainsaw or something, they try to get in there, he leaves his door open wide enough for them to go out and go to the bathroom, that dog's going to tear someone up. And so then, the dog's going to get put down because they're protecting their, his daughter and him? And that's just what I'm, I don't understand why it has to be there if there's one just right up the road.
Okay. I can't really get into it here today, Mr. Lewis.
Oh, that's fine.
But if you want to talk to city staff about why it had to be moved, but it had to be moved.
Yeah, and they never came around and asked anybody nothing. So, thank you.
Jerry, I would like, after hearing this, I would like to have this on the agenda next time, if I could get somebody else to support it, and we could talk about it at the next meeting.
I would support it just so that we can have a conversation, so if you want to have it on.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's my understanding that representatives from MTA would be willing to come and discuss it.
Okay.
If we schedule it for a meeting, so.
All right, so tell you what, we, it may or may not be on next meeting, depends on what else is there, but if you can leave your name with Kathy or call Kathy, we'll make sure to call you when it's put on the agenda.
Yeah, and we're going to, we are going to try for...
Next week?
Yeah. Next council meeting.
Next council meeting.
All right, so it could be next. All right, all right. And I had one of the lady, oh, there you are.
Yes. It's good, old me, Barbara Plaza. I really want to thank you, Jerry. I get nervous whenever I come up here, but, you know, with you revealing the truth that you have been friends with Bill Schaefer for all your youthful life, really puzzles me.
I wasn't.
And finally, no. And finally, after you revealing that to me, knowing that you have been a childhood friend with his sons all those years, and I had to go through four and a half years of torment, I'm just wanting the city to know that you were a liar as a chief of police, protecting us, retired reserve for the Willetts Police Department. You took an innocent, disabled woman, corrupted the system of the police department, and I want our town to know about it. And my rage is right. After you revealed that to me, I don't trust you being honest about anything you ever do in your life. And you to sit here and lie to our new chief, thinking he's not going to know you, know what you know, and you lied to him, telling him you don't know the Schaefer's. In all your youthful life, you've been friends with him at 151 Franklin Avenue, and I'm the new owner, and I'm supposed to just be a, become a criminal within your jurisdiction. I'm ashamed of you. You retired as a police chief in our jurisdiction, and you relied and protected Schaefer at all costs. You should never have gotten your retirement. You should be disbarred from being here as a mayor for the second go-round. I went through Bruce Burton, I went through Adrian Moore, and nobody wanted to do nothing. You are a liar. I want our town to know it. Thank you for revealing it to me personally.
Barbara, I can't discuss this with you, but I'm going to tell you, you took a conversation out of context, so. All right. Anybody else would like to speak?
Although I have no idea what that was about, but it's interesting. My name is Randy Dalton, and I'm calling in, I'm here, not calling, I'm here in regards to the Rails to Trails and the proposed $6.3 million grant that Will has been approved to the city for a trail from the Skunk Train out to the Howard Hospital. And there, I mean, I would like to be able to ask for a workshop of some kind that where community input, people locally can participate and have an ability to monitor, you know, to map, to look at the site, to look at the proposal, and to have input so that it's not just being done behind closed doors by contractors or by, you know, I've heard about it on KZWAX, and very grateful for our local radio station. I'd like to talk about specifically watershed flooding. I have two lady friends that live on Rottus Creek, and their homes are already overflowing often with the rain. If you are proposing to put an asphalt, there's a 100% increase in runoff that's going to impact the drainage and the underground water aquifers. I don't know whether the trails are going to remain or stay for the future. I'm thinking a hundred-year plan. I am a POMO. I have been living here all my life, from Casper to Leightonville to Navarro to Albion. I have six kids, they all live, all six live here in Mendocino. And I am deeply concerned about rural-urban interface, which means the quality of life that we have here in Mendocino, including the horses. I'd like to see horse trails. I'd like to see walking. I'd like to see animals, you know, the children. The risks involved, if there are mountain lions, you know, this is something that you won't think about unless somebody brings it up. But this part, the parcel by the big open space between the Beckel, where it goes into the senior center, the creek behind there is toxic. It's got all kinds of engines and oil. Adam's Tires has told me that that's got a lot of cars in there. It's a Caltrans transportation department. That has to be addressed. You can't just talk about buying property and buying land and, oh, let's pave it, let's asphalt, and let's go do this and that without assessing what's currently there and what is, what you're leaving behind. I'm a heritage. I'm a heritage mother, and I feel very strongly, I didn't even get into food. I want to get the farmer's part of my soul. If we could have fruit trees and native plants, medicine plants that the Indian people here use and know from wild strawberries to yerba buena, yerba santa, the bay laurel, the oak trees, all of these need to be preserved and protected. The salmon, I'm a salmon woman. My grandpa used to have a 65-acre parcel on Navarro River where we had salmon, you could swoop up out of it.
Randy, you're out of time.
Okay, well, I would like to have an opportunity to be able to get together. I called John Levin today, I called the community development, I called the city. He said that there's no mechanism for him to hear me because he's not authorized, we don't have an existing way for citizens like me who are concerned to participate to get our information in. It's take, last week when I came, nobody was here. No, nobody was here.
Randy, I'm trying to tell you who you can talk to.
Okay.
All right. Dusty Dooley back there is our planning director. I suggest you make an appointment to chat with him.
Okay, well, what I'd like to do is be able to get together with our community.
Okay.
And it's not just me with one individual. I've got, you know, I've got my husband graduated from Berkeley in conservation of natural resources.
Right, Ren.
Okay, well, I'd like to have input, the birds.
So, I'd like to assure you that this process will be a long one.
Yes.
And we will have several public meetings and a great deal of public input and environmental reviews. So you will have ample opportunity for input, and we will advertise those, and this will be over the course of the next several years.
I know.
So, please, please know that we will do everything we can to make sure the public is well-informed of all of the workshops we will have on the trail.
I don't want to see asphalt. I want to see cobblestones, I want to see plants.
And you will have an opportunity to input, I promise.
Okay, well, I would love to see many.
We're past our time now, Randy.
Okay, thank you for listening.
All right.
Hi there. Angela Wartell, Brookdale's resident since 2001. My daughter Sylvia, who's 13, she's been in four productions at the Willetts Community Theater. And we go there a lot. And I spend a lot of time in the wintertime and in the dark, walking down Van Lane and Muir Lane in the dark, stepping in puddles and almost twisting my ankle. So, I'd like to request that, now that the city streets look really good, that the city put in some paving work for Van Lane and Muir Lane to get to the community theater, to have access for differently-able people, elderly people, elderly people who are always going to the show have to get dropped off there, the cars have to drive down there. So, it'd be nice if we could get down there without stepping in a puddle of six inches or so or almost twisting the ankle. And I know that before, there used to be signs as well on Main Street, maybe not on Commercial, but on both places with arrows showing where the community theater was, and I don't know where those went. I don't know if the theater has to put up new ones or if the city could do that, that would be great. And in terms of signage, just, yeah, more signage. I don't think there's something at the corner of Commercial and Main right now that shows the way to the rodeo and places like that. I think it's all the way back almost by the Little Mermaid Burger. So, more signage, the better. Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Hi. John Hescheck, Third District Supervisor. And yesterday at the county supervisors' meeting, that there was a proposal from the Cultural Services Agency to change the days of operation for the county museum. And they wanted to, the proposal was to close the museum on Sundays and to put some extra hours on a Thursday evening. And so, I talked to several people, some people on the board of the city council, some people through the city, and so there was a general disapproval of that idea from the people I talked to. And so, I had it pulled from the consent calendar, and then the decision of the Board of Supervisors was to send it back to the museum advisory board. Now, the next museum advisory board is on May 13th at 10 o'clock in the morning. It's a Monday. And, and that will be reconsidered because I, it didn't even go to the museum advisory board until that Monday, this Monday, the 11th, and the decision had already been made and proposed on the consent agenda to do away with the Sunday operations. So, so looking at some of the information I got from the Cultural Services Agency, Karen Horner, was that Sunday was the second most popular day or most, second highest-attended day of the week. And so, so I've heard concern that, you know, people coming from the Skunk Train will naturally, you know, visit Willetts, and part of visiting Willetts is going to the museum. So, so if that's a concern to people, I recommend that you might take a stand at the city council and communicate that with the Board of Direct, or Board of Supervisors, and also make your voices known to the museum advisory board.
I'd like to have that on our next agenda.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, and I look forward to this presentation on the census.
Thank you, John.
Anybody else like to speak?
And I have a second person asking for that.
Yeah, I'll do it. Hi, Andrew Hosford. I'm here to talk to you about 120 East Valley, which is formerly known as the Carlson Apartments. Me and my partner Jeff Yocum purchased that last year, and we worked to demolish the condemned buildings and, or all the buildings and remove it, which was fairly extensive with asbestos and lead-based paint and that type of thing, which was a great learning opportunity for us as new, I'm not going to call us developers by any means, but they say fake it till you make it, I guess. And I just want to talk a little bit about that experience and what we're working towards. I think Jeff dropped off in your guys' mailbox is a, a little flyer on proposed, you know, a luxury residence is, is kind of an indication of what we're looking, looking at, but it's not necessarily entirely that right now. It's, we're just kind of fumbling through a number of different things. But we've surveyed lots of contractors with that process. To my knowledge, there hasn't been a new apartment complex in Willetts in 20 or 30 years, which is pretty extensive. And, and the ones that are there are, one of them sold last week or two weeks ago type of thing. So, we're looking to bring something kind of new and fresh to the community, and unfortunately, that process is fairly expensive. So, we're working on financing that and whatnot. But some of the things that we found since we've gone through that process is, there are grants out there for, for low-income or assisted living or handicap-accessible type things in different communities, and there aren't those accessible in Willetts. I know that we have this great grant writer, and he's done some great work on some of, some different projects, and I would propose to the city council that you guys consider looking at his grants for high-density housing, which is a, which is a thing that I know that the city is having trouble keeping up with the state mandated requirements on. Also, there are, there are some opportunities with variances for those, for the city code on buildings for specific purposes, and the indication is that it's only, so, many of those variances are only allowed with low-income or other type of things like that. But if somebody didn't want to do a low-income apartment complex or something, that we would have issues getting variances in, say, density, parking, or height requirements and that type of thing. And so, I would propose a question to the city council as if you would consider some variances in the city code for something that was not necessarily low-income or, or something like that. And then if you would, if you guys would consider budgeting some time for that grant writer to work on some grants for that same situation, I'm asking you to not consider on variances, so.
I'm not sure what the right process is, so.
So, I would suggest...
I know you probably can't have the comment back in the Terry. That's tough to find.
We cannot, and what I would suggest is that you and I and Dusty have a conversation.
Okay. Sounds good. I've had lots of conversations with Dusty, he's been very helpful. Same with John with the process, so that's been appreciated.
And, and again, we cannot get in the conversation, but certain, I can't, but I can certainly talk to you, and I can certainly talk to council.
Okay. And my understanding is I'm not allowed to talk to the city council members individually too, right? On that regard?
Yeah, we just can't.
We just can't talk to each other.
We can talk to you all of us separately, not as a group unless it's agendized.
But, yeah, but basically, you can't go, I've talked to Greta, and Greta said this is a good idea, and I talked to Madge, and forced us into a serial meeting. But you can't say, this is what I want to do, and I'm going to jump through the hoops, et cetera, and et cetera. And then there's also, I think the best thing is for you to meet with city manager and Dusty, because they can answer your questions regarding those.
You can ask them.
Grants, grant stuff that, again, is something that we were open to, but there's some hoops that need to be jumped in. Dusty's the man that would have some of those answers.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public that would like to speak? All right. I have a closed public comment, and now, item 3A, presentation regarding the Mendocino County 2020 census.
Good evening, Mayor Gonzalez, honorable members of the council, city staff. My name is Tammy Moss Chandler, and I'm the Director of Health and Human Services from Mendocino County, and I'm pleased to open up this presentation for you today. In January, our county Board of Supervisors had the opportunity to accept a small grant that each county in California was offered to start to build a local collaboration around the California Complete Counts, and really look at local strategies of how to, how to increase California's participation in the census. What you're going to hear about tonight is some changes to the census over the, since 10 years ago when the census was last done, and how those create particular barriers and challenges for a rural county like us, some of the local collaborations that we're embarking on. We're very excited to be partnering with the Community Foundation of Mendocino County. They've been such a strong partner for us locally throughout our jurisdictions, throughout the county, and with the county in particular, in many of our social programs. And community foundations around the country have stepped forward to see how they can partner in this year's census count, because, of course, they're trying to leverage and fill gaps that local government can't fill in local communities. So, we're sorry that the Community Foundation isn't here with us tonight, but they're certainly with us here in spirit as we're moving forward with our complete count strategies. I definitely want to commend your city council for the work that you are doing right now to update your general planned housing element and safety element, and the work you're embarking on that's so important to bring in federal and state funding to support community development. And certainly, we know that our census counts and how we pick up accurate local data about our demographics and population is really important to resolving the housing crisis we have here in Mendocino County, to addressing our shared concerns around homelessness and housing, and to increase funding for public safety and, and other important programs for city-county partnership. So, I personally look forward to working with the city and moving forward in this partnership. So, I'll turn it over to Julie Beardsley, who works on our Public Health Department within the Health and Human Services, and certainly, public health's core mission is to help build healthy communities and health and safety throughout the county. So, thank you, Julie.
Good evening, members of the council. I am Julie Beardsley, and I'm with the Mendocino County Complete Count Committee. I'm here to talk to you about the importance of the 2020 federal census. Every 10 years, America counts all of its residents, whether they're U.S. citizens or not. The census determines how many representatives each, each state gets to send to Congress, and it also determines how much federal funding each, each state gets for a wide variety of programs. The, the information that the census collects is completely confidential, and no individual information is ever shared with any other agency. The Bureau of the Census understands how important maintaining confidentiality is. They have some of the world's tightest security on all levels, and individual records are sealed for 72 years. So, based on population counts, it determines the number of representatives in Congress. It allows for redistricting to secure meaningful representation. In 1990, we had an undercount. We actually lost a representative from California. So, it's really vital that we, that we, that we get a complete count. The census is used for a variety of forecasting, for businesses, for transportation needs, determining areas that are eligible for housing assistance, so a lot of different kinds of things. The distribution of the federal funds, this is just a partial list. I could have three or four more pages of things, but there are programs like healthcare, food assistance, highways, veterans' benefits, temporary aid to needy families, schools and education, housing, wildlife restoration, and much more. Every person count, for every person that we count, the federal government will return $2,000 a year, each year, over the 10-year census cycle. So, that's all, that, that comes out to a lot of money for us. This way, this census, there are some new ways that we can be counted. Beginning on March 23rd of 2020, people can go online to a secure census website, and they can fill in their, their information there. There will also be a telephone option where people can call a toll-free number, and there will be language options available in all of these, these ways. There's the traditional mail-in-paper form, and there'll also be an in-person interview. Now, the in-person interview can take place at locations that we're going to choose where we will have census kiosks that have internet access and that are secure. So, this is the ideal path that this time around, the census would like everybody to self-respond, and there will be, there will be a form that gets sent out to people who have either home addresses or rural route mailboxes. And there'll be an identifying number for the resident to go online and complete the questionnaire. For those households, like I said, with no internet access, there will be question assistant centers that are staffed by census staff that are knowledgeable and can answer questions, and the questionnaire assistance kiosks, the quacks and the quacks, that will be located in libraries, schools, colleges, grange halls, wherever it seems like it's a good idea to set one up. But the census does not send paper forms to people who get their mail at post offices. And we have a lot of post offices in this county, and it's, I've estimated that it's possible that 40%, 50% of our residents may not get a paper form, and so this is really a challenge. So, if you don't complete your census form, either online, by phone, or by mail, what happens? Well, sometime in May, census workers, the enumerators, that will come to your home and ask you to complete the census form, or they may leave a form at your gate. But there are some barriers to that. There is locked gates, people that have, get their mail at post offices, people who live in non-traditional housing like RVs or off-grid, people that don't have the internet, that don't have cellphone service, and if there's no GPS, these census enumerators may have a hard time finding people. And as we know, in areas, in part of the, you know, many areas in the county, there's limited road signage. And then, there's my favorite, there's people who distrust or dislike our government. And I think as the southern tip of the Emerald Triangle, there's, there's a few of those. So, these are the hard-to-count areas in Mendocino County, and they were, they were very undercounted in the last census. And so, we really need to, to work with our partners, the Community Foundation and our many partners in the community, to be able to design strategies to, and to find trusted messengers in the community, people who work with these hard-to-count populations, and let's look at that, and, or who are trusted messengers in these communities. And the, the hard-to-count populations include community members who speak languages other than English, those are, who may be undocumented and have concerns about sharing their information, people experiencing homelessness, this distrust, dislike of government, children under five, households with no internet access, for, just to name a few, and minorities. So, in order to get this done, we formed a Complete Count Committee, and we are looking forward to working with you, with the cities, and to working with our many community partners to be able to increase the self-response rate and to implement a census awareness campaign so that we can get the message out there about how important this is. And it's a really, it's a bipartisan effort. No matter what your politics, it's important to be counted. It benefits all of us. So, I look forward to working with you, and I would like to thank you for having us here. Here are some of the things the Complete Count Committee will do, identify trusted leaders and partners. We will act... We will act as a conduit to getting people, if they want to get census jobs, the Bureau of the Census jobs, which will pay about $16.50 an hour, and they'll be part-time jobs, but, you know, I think that there will be a lot of people that might be interested in this. So, the educational campaign, of course, is really important to let people know that it's your money, don't leave it on the table, be counted. It's your civic duty, and that it's confidential, and we want representational government. This is really the core of what we're about. So, the census job descriptions are available online. If you just type in census.gov, you'll be able to find them. 18 years old, valid social security number, U.S. citizen, email address, and that's, if you're a person who, a man who was born after 1959, then you'll need a selective service system number. But, I'm hoping that we will be able to get a lot of people in the community who will want to be census enumerators, because it's going to take all of us to get this done. So, thank you. Thank you.
Julie, is there anything you want or need from the city other than a forum for getting the word out?
Yes, I think we are gonna, we're gonna need to work together, you know, as a group. If there is somebody from the city who would be interested in being on the Complete Count Committee, that would be great. As far as, you know, getting, getting the word out, advertising, you know, possibly sending notices with tax bills, that kind of thing. I mean, there's, I think there's a lot of ways that we can, we can craft strategies. And, for example, the homeless population, we can give incentives like packages of socks or toiletries in order for them, we'll just bribe them, in order for them to be counted. So, yeah, so if you have any questions, this is my contact information, and Paula Cohen, who is on the Board of Directors for the Community Foundation, is the chair. So, thank you.
Would anybody from the public want to ask her any questions while she's up there? Okay, thank you.
I do also want to add that we have a resolution in our consent calendar that is the city's support for Complete Count, and so you will be considering that in your pocket. Also, I'll be, I would be happy to work with you in maybe putting a notice in our wire bills. So, keep in touch.
Mayor Chantel.
Just, well, just a comment that I think within the city limits, it's going to be a little easier than it is outside of Mendocino. But, a lot of people consider Willetts their home, even if they're way up the hill, so I think we can help get that word out.
All right. Is there anything else? Move to Item 3B, Discussion and Possible Action on Request from Solid Waste of Willetts to either raise, collection rate by 68% or change-
Point 68.
Oh, point 68%, sorry.
Yeah.
And then change collection, sorry, Jerry, or change the collection schedule for residential mixed organic waste from every week to every other week to accommodate increased tipping fee for mixed organic waste from Coal Creek Compost.
And this report will be given by Mr. Jerry Ward of Solid Waste of Willetts.
And for the public out there, Jerry doesn't work for us, he is the local owner, has the franchise with the city.
And, and just sort of clarification, Solid Waste of Willetts has a contract with the City of Willetts, and Coal Creek Compost has a contract with you, and I think that, just to kind of lay the groundwork there.
Thank you. Again, Jerry Ward, Solid Waste of Willetts. I wish I wasn't here tonight, because we had a contract with Coal Creek to have a cost of living adjustments to 2022, but they came back with a proposal or a request that they raised the tipping rate $26 a ton to $36 a ton, so it's a pretty significant increase. This, unfortunately, the whole county goes to Coal Creek Compost, so we don't really have a lot of competition. So, I know the City of Ukiah has already approved the contracted increase, and the County Board of Supervisors is going to hear it next Tuesday. I don't like raising the rate here, even though it's point 68 or percent. I did have another option for the council to consider prior to our negotiations back in 2015, when the council wanted to add food waste to the green waste carts. At that time, the only option was to go to Coal Creek Compost. Therefore, there, it was basically told to the council that there's a significant amount of food waste that will be placed in the carts, so it needed to be picked up weekly. Well, we've been collecting it now since 2015, and it's very little food waste goes into the green waste cart. Not saying it doesn't, but it, there's not as much as they anticipated. But, prior to 2015, going back to the year 2000, when we started the green waste program, we were collecting it every other week. With the new contract requirement for the mixed organic waste now with food waste, they require it to go weekly. It created a little more of a problem for us labor-wise, because we were using one, the same driver to collect green waste one week, and then the single stream recycling the other week. Now, because of that, we had to add another labor to that, or actually overtime to collect it weekly. Anyhow, there is an option. We can raise the rate 0.68%, or we could, I could convince the council to go back to the way it was prior to 2015 with no rate adjustment, and we would continue to pick up the commercial accounts that do have food waste. There's several of them in the town. We'll continue to pick those up weekly. That's where the volume is. But, anyway, I wanted to bring it up. Wish I didn't have to do this. I wish there wasn't an increase in the rate. I have no choice but to pay it, and as I pointed out, there's no other options. We did have a compost facility, but we were not permitted to take food waste at the time. So, Coal Creek, Coal Creek is it. And Martin Millick is here tonight. I think he could probably explain a little more detail why he needed to increase it. The fact of the matter is, that has to be passed on to me, which has to be passed on to the residents. So, it's an unfortunate situation, but I don't have any other options. You are directing me to Coal Creek, and we do have a contract with Coal Creek, but you are a third-party beneficiary to that agreement, and therefore requesting your approval. Either option. So, if there's no questions, I'll sit down, and Martin-
We might have some questions, but I think-
Oh, I would, I would like to add, with the every-other-week collection in the past for the green waste cart, we were allowing customers to take up to two to three extra carts so that they could make it through a two-week period, and it's usually during the spring and the fall months, when, when things are a little hectic. We'll continue to do that. The carts are a little more expensive, but having it every other week, I don't mind giving 10%, 15% of the residents a second cart or a third one if they need it. So, that will be, we had no additional charge.
Does anybody up here have questions that you-
Could you let us know what a 0.68% increase would do to an average-
For a 35-gallon cart, it's about $19 a month.
Okay.
And then for a regular dumpster, between $2 and $6 more a month for a commercial account.
Okay. So, for your average residents, it's going to be like a $2 increase per year? If we insisted on staying with the weekly-
If you take $19 times 12, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Evening, council. Martin Millick, I'm with Coal Creek Compost. Yeah, we have an increase. Unfortunately, we have a, we have a poorly-written contract with the various entities in this county, and although they allow for a cost of living increase every year, they don't allow for increase for unforeseen circumstances. In this case, it was unforeseen circumstances that did a grind getting those rates up there. But, this city and this county has enjoyed incredibly low green waste tipping fees. We are, I'm not sure if you've seen the spreadsheet that we put out for the other compost facilities in the area. We have raised our rates up now to 36. The closest competitor to us that could do the same thing would be Navado, and they charge 54. You're still getting a good deal. The reason you got such a good deal for us all along is we have this marijuana industry, and that has, to a large part, subsidized the green waste business. The bottom fell out of it last year, and we got to do something about it, and that's why we had to put the increase. That, that's the single biggest reason. But, there are very few compost facilities that take the variety of materials that we do. And, there are even fewer compost facilities that are as clean as we are. We have zero discharge. We don't pollute the water, we don't pollute the air, we don't, we don't pollute. And our product is highest, the best of, it's unmatched. Other compost facilities say, "Yeah, ours is almost as good as Coal Creek's," or some of them actually claim to be as good, but they're not there. Yeah, the haulers here will grumble a little bit that we have a monopoly. I guess we do, but we've never taken advantage of it. And, yeah, it's difficult within a compost facility. So, any questions about this? I can go on.
You said the main reason that we have benefited from this really low tipping fee was the cannabis industry that was basically providing you a lot of material and a good, right? Is that-
Well, the cannabis industry buys our products.
Okay.
And the cannabis growers will pay a lot more for our stuff than the grape growers do. And, yeah, to be precise, our, our sales to cannabis market last spring fell off by over half a million dollars. And this tipping increase only makes up for 17% of that. We're trying to make up another in efficiencies, better marketing. But, we felt that a 35% increase is probably what we can take.
And then there's also a lot of regulatory requirements that are kind of building up over the years.
Every year, we get more regulatory requirements. There's, well, Jerry is the same thing. It's the solid waste. But, to be clear, Jerry is, is a hauler. He hauls the stuff, and we do not haul. We simply take the materials in and recycle.
Would anybody else in the council have some questions?
I'm okay.
And I would invite the council, please come visit our facility. We're proud of what we have. We'd love to show it off. Where is it? It's hidden. You can't see us from off the road. It's, it's down by Ukiah. You take the Potter Valley Turnoff, and it's the first gate on the right. Unfortunately, we are not open to the public. We are very strictly regulated. One of our conditions is no public. Not our choice.
By invitation, are you all-
By invitation, sure. We'd love to show it off.
How large is it? How many acres?
How large is it? Well, we're leasing 40 acres of a 2,700-acre ranch. On it, we have 10 permitted acres that we're using for the composting.
Have you thought about putting in a bagging line to subsidize some people that can't come in, buy in volume?
That's a whole other industry. We work with people who bag. We're not, we produce compost, but, too much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I'm going to open it up to anybody from the public that would like to come. This is your chance to talk to us as to whether or not we allow this pass-through rate increase or not. So, if you feel strongly one way or the other, I urge you to come forward and speak. Wow, I wanted to come up and droop when I was raising fees. So, okay, so I'll bring it back up here. Go ahead.
So, I did an informal survey on this issue on my city council Facebook page, and I did get a handful of responses, and the vast majority of people said, "I forget to put my green bin out every week, so it would be no problem with me if it went to every other week." People also said, "How much does that mean it's going to go up?" And I figured 0.68%, not much. Jerry confirmed today, $2 a year. So, people also didn't seem that concerned about the rate increase if we stuck with a week. So, I feel like six on one hand, half a dozen the other. There's not a lot of public concern about this.
I, I kind of still think it's important, personally, and I've talked to a few other people too, to have the weekly pickup. I would like to see more residents take advantage of the fact that they can put their food waste in their green bins, and especially if we went to an every-other-week pickup and you missed it, because you didn't notice it was your pickup day, then you're talking a whole month. And if you put some old chicken bones in there and some, you know, whatever, kind of food waste has been in there for a month, especially in the summer, it's going to be really foul. And I think you could even end up with some, you know, problems of animals being attracted to it or whatever. So, I kind of feel like with the food waste, it's an opportunity to take advantage of that. I think it's important, and I think that 20 cents or whatever it is per month or $2 a year is really not going to hurt anybody. But, so that's my feeling. I also just want to put in that I don't believe that we've had enough public information about what should go in those green bins. A couple of the people I talked to said, "Oh, I didn't know that we could put food waste in there." Because I know that it's been posted here and there, but you have to like repeat it, repeat it, repeat it. You've got to have, you know, every other month, some kind of flyer or something so that people know that it's okay to put their, their food waste in there. So, I would prefer that option to the going back to every two weeks.
I just think, I agree with you in principle, Madge, but I think that we've had the green waste option, the mixed organic waste option for two years, and the fact is, is that most people aren't taking advantage of it. And it doesn't seem to be, I mean, we can wish that people did things differently, but they're not. And, you know, switching back to every other week doesn't seem like it's going to be a big factor for a lot of people. And for the few people who did say to me that they are big gardeners and would be, you know, it would be a hardship for them to be every other week, when I said, "Well, you could get a second or even a third bin." They said, "Oh, that would be perfect. That would solve my problem." So, you know, that's something to think of, too.
I agree. I, we use it, Virginia and I use it, and, but with just two people, there's really not a lot of waste that's there. My only problem with every other week is that in the summertime, it gets pretty tough around the boxes, and we usually try to put leaves and all kinds of things to combat the smell, but you have to work at it. And, so, I think it could be either way, but I definitely think that the other, getting the other green can for every other week would be acceptable for me. But, it's just kind of a, it's a toss-up for me, one way or the other. As long as, as we have an extra can, then I would be okay. So, what would we do? Just call the, when if it goes, we just call the solid waste and say we need another green can?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Just, Mr. Ward, do you have two separate trucks, one that picks up the green waste and one that picks up the regular garbage?
Yes.
So, if you went to every other week, that means there would be one less truck on the road every other week?
Well, the other, every other week, too. We go in weekly, and we're going through neighborhoods looking for green carts, and they're not there. But, if we didn't go down that street, somebody would have called in and said, "Well, you missed my cart." So, we could definitely get more of a bang for our buck if we had every other week, because more people are going to put carts out. And we don't really want people putting out a cart that only has a third full. It's just a waste of effort to dump a cart when it's not even half-full. So, having every other week, this is more efficiency for the, for the truck, and not driving through neighborhoods looking for green carts every week when they're not. driving through neighborhoods looking for green carts every week when they're not out.
I was just curious.
And Jerry, it seemed like at one point, there was like a rotation. So before, when it was every other week, you did some streets this week and then the following.
Right.
So you still had the employee out, but he just wasn't covering...
We also have calendars out too. We give the customer a calendar and say, this is your week for recycling, this is your week for green waste. And it was real consistent. And then people could look down the street and say, oh, this must be green waste because the green waste carts are out.
I, I know you have a website. Is that something that if you would create...
You could print them off on the website.
And is that something we could link to from our website so that we can get the word out and maybe the papers could put that out if we did that?
Sure.
Because I kind of feel the same as Brett and Larry that I, I use the heck out of it when the leaves are there. And then I kind of feel guilty, I have to throw some compost, but for the most part it's, this time of year, I don't think it's gonna smell as bad as it's cold, but I also don't have enough to take out, so. Whereas when my trees start shedding leaves, I'm, you know, about May when I'm out there hauling stuff out there till about November, then come November, I'm not as active, but so I'm kind of torn in that respect. But I also don't wanna raise fees for anybody if we don't have to. Even though we're not talking a lot, it's not gonna probably make or break folks, but I did hear from some folks that any sort of raising rates is sometimes a hardship for something, so. So do we need a motion now?
I move to switch back to every other week pickup for the green waste.
I'll take it there.
To clarify, it's still weekly for all the commercial accounts.
Correct. All right. And any further discussion? Any comment in the poll?
I was just gonna say that for me, it's hard to imagine where I'm gonna put the second green bin that I'm gonna need, but I'll figure it out.
Okay. Anybody from the public that would like to say something?
If the, if the compost that sits in my street and hold, you can go back to your compost, it'll, the whole...
We do it. It's fine. I, I would like to make one more comment.
Could you come over here for TV land?
And, yeah, Martin Millick again. It's concerning the education and the amount of green waste. There is still so much material that can be going to our facility that's going to landfill. And you know what? We are cheaper than landfill, a lot cheaper than landfill. And it shouldn't be going there. And, yeah, it's education. Education, education, maybe a little carrot stick. It, there's, there's opportunity out there to actually, yeah, reduce Jerry's costs.
And if you've got something you'd like to give us to put on our website, we'd be more than happy to link it or, or send it.
Okay.
Get the word out. Because I think that, that is it. It's education.
That'd be great.
I happen to own a house with my daughter lives in Oakland and the, whatever, whatever the solid waste hauler is there. They have, they have billings every month, or maybe it's every other month, but they always have a whole flyer in there and they show what percentages are going into the different bins and how close they are to meeting their goals and what's allowed, what isn't allowed. So it's, it's reinforced every other month. I know that we just have these postcards and there's not room on the postcards to reinforce, but I really think that makes a big difference. And, you know, whether we as a community are meeting our goals and whether we could be doing better, I don't, I think we could be doing better. And I'd like to see a little more effort put into that public education.
Okay. You'll have it.
Thank you very much, sir.
Quick question. On our regular garbage bins and blue bins, there's a big thing right on the top of the lid that says what you can and can't. Is there a similar thing on the green bin?
Yes.
There is? Okay. I just didn't notice. Okay.
Sometimes they get it out without it.
Okay.
If it's raining or something, it's hard to put them on. But there is a fix for getting it.
Great. Thank you.
So Kent, if you could repeat back the motion for...
The motion is to approve collection schedule for every other week for the residential mixed organic waste carts as it was before and continue with weekly collections of commercial accounts?
With no change in the...
In the fees.
In the fees.
Fees, right.
All right. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong.
I know just because I prefer the other option.
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Now, item three C, state of the pavement report including discussion and...
The other Jerry.
State of the pavement report including discussion and possible action approving the road priority list. Our engineering department.
Are we gonna have a slideshow?
Yeah.
So I think I'm gonna go where I can see it without...
Yep. Rather use this. I feel like we should have popcorn. Do they get popcorn? I don't think you're supposed to eat in here. Yeah.
Can you see okay?
Okay.
Are we ready? So, I'm Suzanne Lutzes. I'm the assistant engineer for the city and this is our, our whole engineering team here we have for you tonight. So, thank you for your attention. We wanted to basically come here and give you this report on the condition of the pavement within the city and where we think it's going in the future for a couple reasons. I think, one, it's just really good to educate people about what's going on, what we do and why we do it. And, two, we obviously want a chance to hear feedback and, and hear from council and the community in terms of what they think they need and what their wants are. So we're gonna talk about potholes, pavement preservation program, our road priority list and our absent sales tax. So I'm gonna start out talking about potholes. Feel free to ask questions along the way through the presentation. It's also meant to be a discussion with you. And then we're gonna kind of jump around and different people are gonna talk about different things, more or less. So potholes, we wanted to start by talking about potholes because they're kind of the obvious superficial thing that you see in the road day-to-day, especially if you have one on your road, that stands out to you. If the pavement's in poor condition, you're gonna have a pothole. So first, I just want to describe kind of what creates a pothole. There's two primary reasons that a pothole occurs. One is because the surface of the asphalt itself is in bad shape. It's deteriorating. It has cracks in it. And the second is because of poor subgrade. So when you mix those two things together, that's when you get potholes. So the cracks occur because of age and also because of heavy traffic primarily. And then, second, the subgrade, often in this area at least, it has to do with the moisture getting into the cracks once they're there and creating kind of an uneven and unstable surface for the asphalt to lay on. And so when you have heavy weight with those two conditions over it, it just pops out a chip of the pavement. And so that's essentially what you get with that. So one thing that we want to let people know is that we do, as a city, want to hear if you have a pothole on your street or if you notice a pothole in the city because we're just busy doing our day-to-day activities and we don't necessarily drive around looking for them. So oftentimes, we see them and we can point them out amongst ourselves and city staff and have our public works crew go out and fix them. But it is really beneficial and important that the residents that are driving on the streets actually call in if they can and they feel it's important enough and let us know that they have a pothole on their street so that we can go as soon as we can to go fix it. One thing I do wanna point out is that when we go, and that's Bill over there and his crew, they go out to fix the potholes. It is nice, but it definitely is a temporary fix. So it's a low-cost, quick fix to get your road feeling nice, but it definitely is temporary. Oftentimes, the fix can last a year, sometimes not, sometimes longer. But it's definitely not a permanent solution to poor road condition.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
Does it work to fill potholes in rainy weather?
Bill?
We're having problems with the... It all depends on how bad the hole is really. It comes down to that. You don't want somebody losing a front tire or rim or front end because they had a hole. But the, I mean, this weather's been pretty terrific this year with the snow and the ice. So we had sand on top of everything and then we had a snowplow out there. And you're hitting these uneven spots of asphalt and they're popping right back out as soon as you hit them.
Yes.
So we're doing, you know, double, triple tiles on these holes. That's a constant.
You can, in, in the rainy season, you'll have to fill the same pothole three or four times sometimes. It makes them come right back out if it's raining.
But it's inexpensive, quick, temporary.
Right. It's just important to know that it's, you know, if it was a long-term solution, we just go around it. The law, we'd be done with it, so.
Yeah.
It's not the case. Uh-huh.
I thought that we had bought a special thing for potholes, a hot patch of some type. We don't use that anymore?
We do. We are planning on using it on the streets who are about to slurry seal.
I can't hear you, excuse me.
Yeah, we, it's the infrared pavement repair machine and we are going to take it out on Valley and San Francisco Street before we slurry seal them. It's just not as quick as a...
I understand. But it was, it was sold to us as, you know, that it was far better than just pounding the coal patch into the hole.
Yeah.
And so I was just, you know, wondering how come that we are not using it? I'm sorry.
We, we really plan on it and we keep talking about it and then things keep coming up, but we're definitely going to use it. Because it is, it's sort of like a long-term pothole repair.
The, oh, the pothole repair is real quick and easy. You get two guys in a truck, you're driving down the road, you're slinging out asphalt in the hole, you roll it, you're gone. With the asphalt machine, which is a great piece of wood for some of the stuff we got coming up with leveling out some of these old water lines that we've been repairing or something like that, work is gonna do a terrific job for us on that. But at that point, we also have traffic control with that sometimes. There's, there's an increased use of staff time and everything else at the same time.
It's just the bigger production. It's like, you need to set a couple days aside to use that property.
Do, do we pull the water out of the hole before we coal patch it?
It all depends on how bad the hole is and what's going on. We'll even spray a black asphalt oil in there in some of the holes, just trying to make them stick even, even better. So there's, I think all kinds of things we're trying to make them stay as best we can.
Yeah, there's pretty little pockets of smooth stones that the dollars for. They're beautiful. Five dollars, ten dollars, you could probably put some of that rubber stick on it, spray some cobblestones. You wouldn't have to worry about it for ten years. In Belgium, they have cobblestone streets that are thousands of years old. They're beautiful. Mosaic.
Thanks, Bill.
Beauty. The beauty will...
Thank you. Cobblestone does last a very long time.
They, they can. They can last for hundreds of years. They're beautiful. A lot cheaper.
Okay, so I think we're gonna move on from potholes. If that's okay. And Jeremy is gonna talk about our pavement preservation.
Jeremy Rocco, project manager for the city of Willis. The pavement preservation program is something that we're starting this year using hundred-thousand-dollar matching funds from SB one. So we get up to a hundred thousand if we contribute a hundred thousand to these projects. And it's something that we've been needing to do anyway, but we were looking for like a nice, simple project to use these grant funds on. And slurry sealing the streets was sort of perfect for that, so that's, that's our first round. And then the second round, which is hopefully this fall, maybe this spring, we're gonna do some digouts and then probably more slurry sealing. Just quickly, just to describe what slurry sealing is, it's a, it's like a thin layer of aggregate and binder and then water. And it's, it's actually sprayed on the road out of the back of the truck. It's, I'd describe it, it's kind of like putting chapstick on your lips. Like it seals the road, it rejuvenates it a little bit, the asphalt, it makes it look nice. It lasts five to seven years usually. It's much cheaper than asphalt, but you can only do it to roads that are in decent shape. You can't slurry seal a really bad road. It'll just come right back out. A digout is sort of a, it's a longer-term fix. It's a big, thick slug of asphalt and you, it's for like spot repairs for really bad sections. And I, I'm kind of excited about that this fall because it, it's gonna take care of some of these like big problem spots that we have around town, like the really big potholes. We can hit a bunch of those.
Jeremy, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
This slurry seal, is that kind of like akin to like parking lots when they come in and put that black coating on them?
It is. It's thicker though and it lasts longer. It has more aggregate in it. It's like watery asphalt.
But their purpose is to extend the life.
Yeah, yeah. And it, and it's, it's very cost-effective. It's probably a fifth of the cost of like an overlay, so. An overlay lasts ten to fifteen years and slurry seal lasts five to seven years, so it's another cost and, you know, half the time, that's, that's a good bang for your buck.
Can I have a quick question, Jeremy?
Yeah.
So I'm sure that there will be people, so my understanding is that slurry seals are done on streets that are already still in good repair.
Yeah.
And that prolongs their life before they get into a state of disrepair.
Yeah.
I, my concern is that there will be people from the public who see us slurry sealing good streets and will say, why are you doing that when we've got worse streets to take care of?
Yeah.
So could you maybe explain just briefly why we would be doing that at the same time or even ahead of fixing some of the really bad streets?
Well, a lot of it's this grant funding and it's, I mean, it's not one or the other. We're doing both. And just, you know, the overall reason for it is it's just, it's more cost-effective to bring your roads up and keep them in good shape than it is to constantly chase the failing roads. That's just the, it's been studied and that's, that's the pavement, people's new thing is, it's not new, it's twenty years old. That's, you know, that's part of our pavement management program. It's a treatment that's recommended and that's, that's what we do to preserve roads.
This is, this is an effort to help people understand that because it's coming this year and we, you know, this presentation discussion is meant to help inform people. So this is an effort to do that.
In effect, this will actually be saving the city money over the long run by preserving the asphalt.
Yeah, that's absolutely...
Better condition.
What happens if you want cobblestone?
What's that?
How do we get cobblestone in this discussion? I don't want slurry, I don't want pavement and I want those little stones that you can get at the dollars for. I have dollars worth of little stones at the dollars for. I felt the problem was...
I, I think at this point we're...
I know, but I wanna, I wanna know how we can avoid it.
I haven't opened it up to the public.
Practice for common sense. There's different ways.
And another, another thing is we can do a combination of, of digouts to bring a road that sort of borderline up to a more slurry sealable condition and then slurry seal that rather than having to reconstruct another road. I think, I feel like we're gonna be putting these state funds to really get use of this.
Thank you.
Can I just add that with our upcoming slurry sealing job, we're, we're going to be able to address a number of streets where if we have to do a reclamation job, we're, we're focusing on one street. So if... So it will get a lot of coverage out of this.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, it probably should have used more contrasting colors on this, but the light blue are the streets that we are going to be slurry sealing this spring, except there is a mistake in the south and the Hale Creek and San Adrian are not being done. But we are getting seven streets, I think, for $200,000. And then the green streets are all other streets that are in a condition that could be slurry sealed and we're hoping next year or the year after to slurry seal those. So it's, it's a good portion of town that, you know.
And you name the streets certainly?
The, for me? Yeah, I don't know if I can zoom in.
I can read them to you. So the streets to be sealed in 2019 include Northbrook Way, Mill Creek Drive, School Street, Pine Street, Holly Street, San Francisco Avenue, and East Valley.
And I think that brings us to the road priority list.
Just a quick question, when you slurry, if there is striping on that road, then it needs to be re-stripped down in that process?
Yes. It's part of the cost and it's part of, it's part of the, you know, there is an aesthetic value that the slurry seal too, you know, it makes the road nice and black and then you get new markings and it's safer and prettier.
I also just wanted to add that this is a way for us to, to not lose ground.
Yeah.
While we're working on, on streets that are considered in poor condition or failed condition, we're, we're not having streets that are, are like, you know, losing ground, so.
A good example of that is West Commercial Street, which that's one of the jobs I worked on early here, and it was a brand-new road then, and now it's needing a slurry seal. And in the meantime, there are jobs on our road priority list now that were on the list then too that still haven't been done, so it'd be nice to stay on top of some of these roads if we get it fixed. So, move on. Another tiny map. Maybe I'll just get to the, the spreadsheet.
The map basically identifies these.
Yeah, we can go back, we can go back to it after we talk. So there's, within our pavement management program, there's a, a rating of the condition of the roads called PCI, which is the Pavement Condition Index. It's a zero to 100 scale. 100 is a perfectly new paved road and a zero is a, you know, completely failed road. It's, it's a tool we use to, to prioritize streets, but it's not the thing. Our, our PCI of our roads is determined by a consultant that does the whole county. So we don't always necessarily 100% agree with the PCI they assign some of our streets. But I mean, it's, none of them are wildly off, but it's, it's just, it's an indicator. But there are other things that make us want to pave a road. In general, between a 70 and a 90 is a street you would want to slurry seal. 50 to 70, you start thinking about overlay and under 50, it's, it's failed and you need to reconstruct the whole road and that's really expensive. But again, there's, you know, there's streets that are maybe a 55 and then we could do a couple digouts and it would be a 70 and we'd slurry seal it. So it's, it's, it's not, you know, the be-all, end-all. Yeah.
I was under the impression that Railroad Avenue is, was in with the rails and trails to do some of the work on it. Am I mistaken that when originally when Tom Manick did it, that, that was part of the cost of rails with trails was to, to upgrade the, the water problem and everything on Railroad Avenue?
Maybe the drainage, maybe, that, we, we might be addressing some of the drainage, but probably not the, any underground utilities.
I, I didn't, I'm sorry.
Maybe the drainage problems on Railroad?
Oh, it's drainage problem?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that could be, but I don't think asphalt or underground utilities.
Okay. I just remembered something that there was, that with the rails and trails, that that was part of it, that, that he wanted it, that's one reason that he really wanted the rails with trails is that it would alleviate some of the problems that we had, the drainage and whatever over in that area.
Yeah, I think it will let us, there is, there are drainage issues over there and I think it will help those.
Thank you.
So the PCI influenced by, I, I guess what I've heard in the past is the city was famous in the past for.
They don't work.
Paving a street and then all of a sudden a water line or sewer line would come in or, or drainage and then they, then you have a, I guess, a, a dig-out patch job.
Yes.
And the purpose nowadays is we think it through before we, we go in. And I guess my question is, is PCI influenced by that or is that its own score?
Yeah.
And then you come in as the engineering department and either give it an up or a downgrade.
Yeah.
Based on what else we need to do.
That's one of the things we don't like about PCI is it's just asphalt condition.
Okay.
It doesn't take into account why it's like that. So, you know, you can see from this list, so this is sort of the staff's recommended top eight projects. Color coding, there are multiple streets, but, you know, one project together. Most of these are, are needed because of utility issues. There are some streets that are, that are bad, but usually the really bad ones have utility problems on them. Good example is our, our first ranked project, that's the water, water line on Maple, Pine, and Spruce Street. They're fixing it constantly, it needs to be repaired. Water Department has funds to pay for the water main repair. But those streets are in, they're, they're in bad shape anyway, and after we construct a water line on them, they're really going to need to be repaved. So the $520,000, that's just the paving, that's not, that's not counting sewer and water funds that they pay for their own portion of that.
I'm sorry, I mean, just to go out. The, the water line is really the, the driving force behind this, the pine and vicinity water line or utility project. And, and there is some sewer that needs to be replaced on, on Maple Street. And then those streets are in such bad condition, mainly Maple and, and Spruce, that we will reconstruct those roads as part of that, that project.
I will.
So to go back to what you were saying, Jer, Jerry, I think you can see that we really consider what's underneath the road.
Yeah.
When we develop, when we developed this list, it's pretty much a primary driver, especially for these higher-ticket projects. And then maybe, maybe we could flip to the next table. We did also want to bring to your attention that there are some streets that do need to have resurfacing done, so they do need new asphalt, but they don't have the underground utility issues that the previous table had. And that's something that really you guys could provide insight and guidance to us about, because there's kind of two different types of projects. There's these kind of bigger utility or rehab, road rehab projects that kind of have, they're multifaceted and they have several different things going on that need to be repaired. But then there's also this table, which is, you know, roads that don't have those issues, but they really need new asphalt and possibly most of the time pedestrian upgrades for ADA compliance. And so something that we always grapple with is, you know, where does council, where does the community feel like the strongest need is? Do you want to go and, you know, do more straight streets and pedestrian upgrades for ADA? Do you want to do, you know, the utility, the sewer, the water? Because the bottom line is we only have so much time and so much money. And so having direction from you guys will really help us understand how to proceed. And we've, we've tried to present to you with these two tables so you can get a feel of, of the different options, if you will.
I guess another question would be, you, I get the ones where you need to do the whole total rehab and you're assigned, there's the PCI and then you're assigned level, but on some of the other streets, do you factor in, I'll tell you what, you take a, and I, and I don't know which has got more traffic than other, but you take account, the traffic counts on one street is usually more than the other?
Yeah.
Because I guess it's like, if you asked me a police question, I could probably offer you an opinion, but if you offered me a pavement question, it would be anecdotal. I could say whenever I drive on that street, I feel a bump.
Yeah.
But I don't drive that street all the time, but there are some people that drive it all the time and they may have a more of an input.
Right.
So I guess that's my question to you.
Well, yeah, you notice like the second priority here is, is centered around Brookside School. We, we have some major drainage issues there and it's a very heavily used area on, on small streets. So, no, we, we do try to consider use in the area.
And just, this was on the top of the second group. Sherwood Road is completely being redone by councilants right now. Is the portion that you've got on this list a part that they're not?
Yeah, right, that's a city-owned portion.
There's still, still some section they're not going to touch that.
Above.
Yeah, that belongs to us and we would like to try to take advantage of the fact that granite's in their paving and get that paved well there.
So you would be trying to ducktail width?
Yeah, yeah, simultaneously. See if we can get it. We can ask.
I also, I mean, I think we, we are seeking direction and, but as you see, the way that we've prioritized this list, we have some major utility upgrades that are, are needed. And, and they tend to coincide with projects that have been on the previous road priority lists for, for a number of years dating back, some of them dating back to, to the half-cent sales tax and such. So we, we definitely feel that, that utility upgrades are, are very important. In the case of Spruce Street, we've been told by the, the water department that there's actually physically no more space to put in bands. They're removing bands and putting, repair bands. They're putting like larger bands in there and it's just at a, at a point where it's, it's critical and great, so.
Some of these critical utility repair projects, I mean, we could just fix the water and trench pave it. We're, we're not recommending that, but I mean, you could. The problem is you take a street, you take any street and you do underground construction on it and it's going to be hard on the street. If it's a street that's already failing or failed, it, it really is hard on it. So we don't recommend it, but it is, you know, it's an option.
And, you know, we, we had the opportunity with, with our last project where we did an improvement project on, on Maple Street and Laurel to look at a paving, doing some kind of temporary paving for, for Maple, but we decided not to because we knew that this, this water line and sewer line needed to, to be upgraded and we thought, you know, that the most efficient use of money would be hold, hold off for another year and try and come in and do it correctly.
No, we actually did get an estimate from Argonaut for doing something and it just was not cost-effective. And they didn't recommend it as, you know, paving contractors.
Sorry, another question would be, in a perfect world, obviously if you had the money to do all of it at once, you'd take advantage of paving being done in 2019, 2020, right, because every year you have to hold off. Does it, the price goes up?
Yes.
So our, I guess our buying power goes down a little bit if we kick the can down. But I see why we have to kick some cans down.
Yeah, and that's, you know, we tried to add a little bit, you know, but we didn't, we didn't chronologically estimate these, so these are pretty much the prices for these jobs now. We didn't add an inflation factor.
I, I get that, that is very noise for discussion.
Yeah.
Just kind of a side note too, is that something that we're very aware of in our office is that even though we have this list and they're ranked, you know, here for example, one through eight, it doesn't mean that something is not going to just come up. Something will come to work and will have some, you know, utility that becomes a significant problem and all of a sudden, you know, the priorities change, so it's just really important to, to understand that it's a balding, it's a living priority list.
Besides our utilities, we're also assuming in contact with PG&E and the telephone companies so that they don't come in backwards and pass.
We try.
We try.
They've been doing that to us lately, even though we are trying, but, yeah.
And something we're, we're hoping to bring to council in relatively near future is a pavement, a no-cut, sorry, help me.
Oh, yeah, with the, yeah, moratorium on our streets, it's something that other towns do, or basically. We, we notify the utility companies that we're going to pave a street, tell them, come fix your stuff, basically, if you need to fix it or you can't touch our road for 10 years or you'll have to repave the whole thing or, you know, something like that. I've seen a couple examples of, with the encroachment permit ordinance revision that we want to bring, we want to add that to it. Also, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Well, maybe I should wait for the end of your presentation, but, you know, this is really impressive, a lot of information, and it's, I don't see how, I personally couldn't come up with anything better, because you really have the whole city in mind when you're looking at all the different factors, so I'm really impressed with, with this report. And earlier this evening, someone mentioned Van Leeuwen. I just wondered, it's not, doesn't appear here, and it is pretty bad. So, when did you ever cover that?
It was, so there were several past lists that was on a previous list. Just with, I mean, what do we have, 14 projects on here? So this is like a 10-year list probably. Yeah, it's been on lists, it's, it has some utility problems, it's definitely in bad shape. There are other streets that are in really bad shape too. If you wanted to add it, it'd be added. I think it didn't make our cut just because of the low traffic relative to some of these others, but there, South Coast is on here and it's very low traffic, but it's probably the worst street in town despite what PCI says, so. I mean, I, we just tried to keep the list sort of doable. I mean, we're not going to complete all these projects on this list before we're talking to council again about reprioritizing for sure, so.
You didn't want to give us a hundred project list?
We just gave you every street. And the other thing is, they're prioritized, but we might get grant funding for Blosser and that, even though you say it's priority four, it could jump up to number one. and that, even though you say it's priority four, it could jump up to number one. I mean, it's a, it's a general sort of guidance that we're looking for, but things could cause things to shift. It's just, this is more like what we're working on unless you tell us to work on something else.
And I'd also like to add that we are actively, each one of us is actively working on a couple of these projects. There's the Pine and Vicinity Utility Project, West Mendocino is currently being worked on, and Blosser Lane. So, you know, those are underwritten ones.
Kind of a question for all three of you. Obviously, what happens sometimes is that the public comes to any one of us and says, "What about, whatever, Bluff Street? Why didn't Bluff Street get paved or whatever?" Do you have a mechanism for the public to send you comments or some way that, I guess I'm just your chance to kind of get out, is there maybe something that, I guess it could come to us and we could say it, but I'll be honest with you, I always feel like, "Yeah, I gotta tell you that Bill Smith says he wants his street paved, and I'm sure you're showing me a logical system you've come up with, and I should build." Unless Bill comes up with a, you know, whatever.
It, I mean, we'll go look at it. Maple Street, the storm drain on Maple Street that we did was not on any list before, but it was just this condition that just had to be fixed immediately, and the city engineer, you know, said, "We need to bring this to council," and we did. So, that mechanism of people talking to council and council bringing it to us is...
I guess I'd say we have a website down, if there's a, maybe a button on there where people can say, "Please, bring my street higher, here's some of my reasons," or something, then maybe it takes it out of the Facebook world or the, you know, whatever, so that they have a chance to interface with engineering. Because there may be something different that comes up, "Hey, I hear that they're going to do this," and not that you have to take forever getting that over the thing. You get that info.
Well, we don't have a mechanism necessarily, but, I mean, we have a department email that, you know, people want to email their concerns, we'd be happy to look at them. The website is a good opportunity to set up something like that.
It's gonna be really easy to just add a line in there that people can email us or call us.
I know some places do, but, you know, maybe your favorite pothole or the phone number.
I'd say the pothole reporting will probably take care of a lot of that, just by the number of times we fix the same pothole.
We are looking into whether our website is capable of having a report pothole. Our webs, our, our email and our phone number are listed on the website. In a previous slide, it appeared our, your phone number, but we do check those, and, and we're always, you know, welcoming public input, but I, I really do think that council as the policymakers and setting the priorities, you know, it's beneficial for, for the public to speak to you guys, and then you can weigh, weigh what our recommendations are at the public and, you know, who's set priorities.
And I, I agree with that, and I also think that, you know, people know the council members, and I think a lot of people feel a level of comfort in talking with us where they might not know, you know, Andrea and Jeremy and Suzanne, and so I definitely encourage everyone in the public to talk to your council members if you have concerns about the streets. We're absolutely here for that.
Can I submit a photo of the street?
Sure.
It's Bittenbender, and the asphalt's completely gone.
Oh, yeah, Bittenbender.
It's not a city street, isn't it? Part of it is, right?
Jeez, what is the, I have to look that up, I can't remember.
I thought part of Bittenbender was only a small part of the city.
You might be right. I need to, I need to look into that. I know we surveyed that.
And I thought that was the issue, that Bittenbender was a private street.
He might be right. I think we have, you know, utilities on it, but I don't think it's actually our, but I, I have to check, I can't remember.
They do have city water.
Yeah, they do. But that happens sometimes without it being a real city right of way.
Yeah, sometimes we'll just get, get an easement for that water line.
Shall we move on?
Well, there's another part of the presentation.
One more slide.
Yeah, we wanted to discuss the, what were we, the half-cent sales tax and its use. So, my name is Andrea Trincato, I'm a project manager for the engineering department, and I, I wanted to discuss the half-cent sales tax, because that's the mechanism by which we, we pay for transportation improvements. In 2003, voters approved a half-cent sales tax increase to be used for transportation improvements. This includes maintenance, rehabilitation, reconstruction, construction of roads and bridges, including sidewalk curb and gutter, ADA accessibility, and drainage facilities. The half-cent sales tax is not approved for any, any uses outside of transportation improvements. It does, however, include the ability to, to pay for overhead expenses related to the transportation, the administration of, of projects, including bidding and designing, construction management and inspection of the work. The city, so as part of the, the sales tax enactment, the city developed a transportation expenditure plan that identified at the time the road priority list, and it was specified as a living document that was meant to be updated from time to time, and that's what we're here doing today, as well as informing the public about, you know, state of the pavement. So, let's see, as part of the, the plan, they, they identified eligible expenses, and those eligible expenses include patching, like, like pothole repairs and digouts, rehabilitation, reconstruction of roads, seals such as cracked sealing, slurry sealing, and there's, there's numerous seals that, that are used, grinding, overlay, maintenance of unpaved roads, bridges, including the construction and maintenance of bridges, street drainage, traffic safety such as traffic striping, curb gutter and sidewalk, and ADA accessibility, which, which basically is the, the ramps, the ADA compliant ramps. And then, as I said, as part of the eligible activities, it covers staff time that's used for designing and bid administration, construction management and inspection, as well as it pays for 30% of the engineering budget. The engineering budget is split amongst several funds, including water, sewer, transportation is part of that, and that pays for the, the non-salary expenses. And, let's see, we, the city, on average, receives about $750 a year, sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less, $750,000 per year in half-cent sales tax funds. And roughly 200,000 of that is, is spent on, on operational expenses and design and administration of the projects, leaving an estimated $550,000 per year for projects. That's generally what we accomplish, on average, is a half a million dollar job, on average, a year. It's sort of what, what the fund brings in and also what we can handle with our, our current staff resources. And, let's see, some of the recent projects that we've completed, and by recent, I mean, you know, a, a stretch of time, so West Commercial Street was a federally funded project, and the half-cent sales tax contribution was 38,000. Redwood Avenue Drainage, you know, was 157,000. There are some projects here, I won't go through all of them, but there are some projects here that, like Central Street Rehab, that are, are several years' worth of half-cent sales tax revenue, and we, we definitely have some of those on our road priority list. So, you know, I think we're, we're designing and, and trying to put these projects together. We're trying, we're trying to balance, looking at the fund revenues and also looking at grant opportunities, and that's, that's one possibility with, with Blosser, because Blosser is like a 1.3 million dollar project. So, you know, all things considered, we just, we wanted to bring this road priority list forward, and we wanted to see what you guys think about it, and, if you have any other questions about it. But this, our staff is going to be working on, on the list as we put it forward, unless you guys make modifications to it.
Can I say something? My crack staff over at the police department, who are monitoring this, said Bittenbender is entirely within the city limits until it dead, dead ends.
No, it's not a question, Scott, it's whether it's a city street.
Got it, okay. Got it, okay. We don't know that.
I don't think it's a dedicated street.
Oh, interesting.
Thank you.
It's all worth it.
There was a leak underneath my house this, this year of water, after an earthquake or something, it was, my water bill went up to 600 miles.
Is this a street question?
It's a street question. And we, BGE, I came out, and he said that in Santa Rosa, that it's a street, and then they'll re-dig it up, is what you said earlier about the, the underground sewer lines would be fixed, and then they'd dig it up to do the underground electric lines, and then they'd dig it up, and then there'd be a road repair, and there was no coordination.
Is it Santa Rosa or Willets?
I'm, I'm trying to figure out what's going on here in Willets.
Okay, what, if it's going...
I'd like to see coordination at some point in the week. I'm curious to know if there's been any impacts as a result of the Caltrans. You know, if the drainage has changed since they repaved, I was told that 15 years ago that all the underground sewers from Brown's Market...
Okay, ma'am, we're getting off track here.
No, I saw it, saying that all the pipes were redid.
Okay, we're getting off track.
The sewage lines, no, I can tell you my, my...
If you have a question, I think I would follow up with...
I would like to know if there's coordination between the sewer lines and the natural gas lines and the electric lines and the telephone lines. This is pertinent, and the road repairs being... Why don't you do the, do the... And then, my pop, my grandfather was an engineer, he'll build, he'll get you down the gold and be great, which are still standing.
Do we coordinate, yes?
Yeah. Sometimes emergencies come up, but we do make an effort.
Okay, next question.
I have a question. I own Earth Treasures, right next to Jackneth Box. There's a lot of potholes on the, there is really no sidewalk, and I'm not sure if that's Caltrans or City. Caltrans, okay. My other question, when the cars made a left on Port Brad, a lot of them, I guess they realized that they wanted to go straight, so they've been making a U-turn inside my lot. I have so many potholes, I have fixed it, I don't know how many times. I almost didn't get insurance this year because of that. And we fixed it, and they finally gave us insurance again, so this is a big issue for me. And it's the cause of the traffic that keeps pulling in, making a U-turn, and going out back to the line to make a left to go.
You know, Maya, maybe what I should have you do is follow up with our police chief on that, see if he doesn't have a remedy. So I ask you to get with our police chief, Scott, we're not... All right. Are you guys done? Does anybody else appear to have any questions? Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I, I really appreciate the thoroughness of this report. You guys did a knockout job on this. For somebody who's new on council, I, I felt like, wow, I learned a ton. It was, it was incredibly helpful, and it helped me answer questions the public was asking about our roads. I, I also am quite pleased with the list. I understand that there are streets that other people would want to have on there, but as we pointed out, we can't do them all. This seems like a good place to start. We definitely have to be flexible, recognizing that problems arise that were unanticipated, and that could bump other streets onto the list or change the order of the list. And I understand what you're saying, that there are some projects like Central Street that would take up multiple years of the half-cent sales tax revenues, but I would love it if we could make some kind of commitment as a council to direct staff, to, to, to commit to completing, you know, as many of these projects on a regular basis as possible, and to come back on maybe even annual timeline to show the public that we're making progress. Roads are one of the biggest things that, that community members see as what city offers, and if they've been living on Maple for the last 20 years and paying their taxes and going, "Well, I don't know where the taxes are going," this is something that we can address by, by getting these projects done. So, I, I love the list, I would love to see us make some kind of a commitment to follow through on it and report back regularly to the public so they can see progress.
Do we not do that during budget time, as far as what's going to happen or not happen?
We, we really don't. This is a, this prioritization process has been happening every five years. I kind of love the idea of this sort of state of the pavement address sort of thing.
Great.
And I got a lot of positive feedback from that, and I do think it should be annual. It was a heavy, I mean, it was a lot of work from a very small staff that does an amazing amount of work. But I think that now the format is here, sort of updating it with the, with the lists of things accomplished over the year, I think is something that could probably be done once a year before budget time.
And it could make you guys feel good, because you get the public and the council saying, "Yay, good job."
I'd like to just add one little point, that there are years, like 2016, where we weren't able to address a pavement project because we were doing a major main line repair on Main Street. So, it's, it's our, it's our goal to, to address pavement every year, but, but there are circumstances sometimes that, that arise that...
And that's a great time that you could address that for some people.
Mitch?
Yeah, just a clarification, I guess from Stephanie, too. We committed a million, 1.5 million to the Main Street improvements over several years, and that's in the capital improvement budget. That is largely half-cent sales tax funds. Does that mean that we can't do these listed things until we've done those, or...
So, what we've done is, we have been sort of setting aside as a placeholder in the budget, during the last budget process, what we did is we sort of put a chunk of money in for Main Street. That was not needed this year, so that's going to remain unused, but they're, they're booked. I mean, they're doing as many projects as they can this year, so that money isn't really required. But yes, we're always trying to keep it sort of freed up.
Maybe I can, because I think I know where you're going, is I guess, is that money spoken for already, not this money, but, or is that a placeholder, and we kind of rock here and fake Paul, I guess, is the question.
So, so right now, it is, it is in the budget. It is allocated for Main Street. We are not going to be using that for Main Street in this budget year. You know, we were thinking about, you know, there was a, a discussion about putting pavers in the sidewalks. We did find another funding source for those, and, so we will not have to use this half-cent sales tax for that, which is wonderful. So that money is going to be sort of pushed over to the next year, but we only allocate really a, a small amount per year for Main Street, in case it's needed. We are going to have to have discussions about what kinds of things on Main Street really qualify for this half-cent sales tax, however. We do have a newly paved road, we have new sidewalks, we're going to have new pavers, they can't really pay for trees. There's a limited amount it could probably be used for, quite honestly. There's a limited amount it could probably be used for, quite honestly, but we're going to, you know, once we start the actual Main Street process, and of course, the relinquishment has been pushed forward because of the rains, and so we're.
Pushed back, you mean?
Pushed back. I'm sorry. Yeah, pushed along the road because of the rains, because we are relinquishing both projects, the Sherwood Road project and the Main Street project at the same time, and because the Sherwood Road project got stalled because of the rain, the relinquishment of Main Street was also stalled.
Okay, so they're not really competing for the same.
No, they're working as fast as they can.
Okay.
So I also wanted to address that, your question, Suzanne, I think you brought up, of directions from the council regarding full rehab projects versus the pavement-only projects. Pavement-only, I think, sounds appealing to folks, because it's quick and easy and you can see it. Personally, I'm kind of the person to do it right the first time, and I would lean towards the rehab projects. Let's get those big things done and knocked out, so then we can address the pavement-only stuff. I don't know how anyone else feels, but I sort of think, you know, it's like putting the chicken before the egg to do the.
Well, I'll tell you, I kind of feel the same with, slurry seals fine for something like that, because it's cosmetic or it's meant to enhance it, and in that case, if you were going to slurry seal something, because you're not going to get to it for a couple of years because of the priority. But I guess I just hate the fact that, over the years, I've seen us, as a city, do a nice street paving project, because there were past councils that wanted pavement to make the public happy, but then we came in and cut up the road because of the sewer or because of a water line. And I gather that, albeit that sometimes it was unexpected, but then now you end up with that patch, and then you know when you're driving to that patch, it always sinks a little subtly, and then it just looks like, wow, this was a beautiful street till we broke it up again. And I kind of feel the same way as Greta, that I, and I guess that's, I guess where I'm torn, because I get a, people will come up and say, why don't you pave my street? Some people have joking, at least some are like, well, maybe he will shake the tree and get my street paved. But at the same time, I usually tell them, well, you know, it's a little more complicated than, would you rather we throw some pavement on it, then come back later on and tear it up again, and then not pave something down the road? I guess that's where I was getting at earlier, that if people could ask those questions of you, they could, I got no problem people coming to me, but sometimes people want to know, well, why didn't my street get paved? And a quick email to say, look, Maple was the one that I think everybody kept getting, you know.
Maple's bad.
It looks like a little landing spot.
I've been a real opponent of doing it and doing it correctly from the very start, and then you don't have to come back to it. And that's really, really the way that I think that we should look at it. And I know that we have to jump around, and, you know, we have certain things that we get grants for that jump right to the head of the list, but I think you guys have done a pretty good job, and I see how we look into that little scope and seeing whatever you do when you're there. But anyhow, thank you very much. You've done a really good job. Thank you.
And that's one thing I want to jump on with Larry, that, you know, because you guys will see me out there sometimes with my dog, and I stop and chat with you guys. And don't ever take that I'm trying to do my two cents about not to pave. But sometimes I'm just curious and watching, but I like the fact that you guys have your little vests on, and sometimes I'll see all three of you out there doing your thing, and, yeah, and Bill's staff out there doing their thing, too, but you guys get your hands dirty. And so I kind of feel like, I've actually stopped and told people, what are they doing? I said, you're getting your money's worth. That's the engineering department. And they go, what? And I go, yeah, that's what's happening there. And then goes, well, where do I get pavement? I go, when those people think it's worth it. Sometimes I tell them, so that's what I've got.
I just also wanted to point out to the public, this roads issue has brought up a lot of public comment. I mentioned earlier that I posted on Facebook about the garbage issue, and I think maybe, you know, thirteen people responded. I posted also about this state of the pavement, and it was shared, I don't know how many times, I think I got six thousand hits. I never get that many hits on anything I post on Facebook, so roads really matter to the public. I read an article about the city of Palo Alto, who just recently congratulated themselves. Their council passed some kind of special proclamation, because they had finished their goal of improving their PCI for their streets. They had an average of seventy-two, and they brought it up to eighty-five. It took them eight years and cost forty-five million dollars. So let's all keep that in mind when we're thinking, man, our streets are really lousy. It took a city like Palo Alto that long and that much money to get that result. We've got a lot stacked against us, and the fact that we get as much done as we do is pretty impressive. So we should be patient and keep asking for more, but be realistic about what can be accomplished.
And I think also that there are some streets in town that are private property, that people are under the belief that they are, it's the cities. And because they see us out there because it's a utility easement or something, and we're out there, and they think it's the cities', and so I think that's where I kind of hope folks will contact you guys and say, why didn't you pave? Or whatever, and if you can answer that quick question.
We have a good feel to what's going on.
Because I know that contractors have no problem getting ahold of you, or folks wanting the encroachment permits, but the average Joe out there sometimes doesn't think that they can call on.
Of course. Can you clarify about utilities in the city?
We have our own utilities as far as our water and sewer. So when we go out, we'll have a utility easement sometimes, where we'll go down on one of these private roads, and we'll patch or do what we have to do, but it's just that, we have a right to go onto that private property. That's different than P G and E or whoever else. They have those utility easements with those property owners.
And, you know, we really like hearing from the public and helping to, you know, inform them when they call in. And we've been fairly understaffed in our office, and we have a new staff member that can help field the calls, and will be there to answer the phone, so we really do welcome that.
And I'm going to say a non-politician sort of thing, and that I really, I know there's always going to be politics that creep into it, but I would rather that there be a science to what we're doing than it be perceived to be a good old boy thing, that you got your street paved because of who you know. I think that's why, in my mind, I want to look people in the face and say, look, you didn't rate high enough because of X. Sorry, I would love to have my street paved, but honestly, it doesn't have the, whatever, what is that, not some sort of drainage issue or something that's happening? In a perfect world, we'd all want our streets paved, and I think that's what we'd like to move towards, what Greta was saying. But we're not Palo Alto, but.
Yeah, I wish.
Thank you very much.
I guess I don't wish that we are Palo Alto, but I wish I had, we had that kind of budget. I just wanted for the public to remind you that they do want to get phone calls if you have a pothole on your street, and the number is four-five-nine-four-six-oh-five, because they don't see every street every day, and you drive on them, if you have a pothole, they'll know to go out there as soon as they can, time permitting.
And it might be Bill's happy face you see.
It very well be.
I also wanted to say that it's a goal of ours to put some of this information on our website to help educate people, so that resource will be available to them.
Thank you very much. Very excellent report, thank you.
So what is the possible action we can take on this?
So we're looking, I'm looking for, yeah, a motion to approve the list.
The paving, the priority list.
I'll move to accept the staff recommendation.
Second. All right. Any further discussion from the public, or input from the public? Can you step up here? Sorry.
The.
And if you can make it relevant to us.
I can, I can, I can bring it around. And who told one point? I would like to bring it back to the impacts as you go. If there are impacts of flooding or drainage, you know, if the drainage, new drainage pipes that have been installed by Caltrans impact the old drainage systems that are under the ground, where are these ongoing considerations going to be included in this list as it goes on? If there's an earthquake, if there's flooding, how do you keep current what's happening now to what's, as it's been done twenty, fifty years ago? We need to keep current, and it needs to be flexible, the models need to be flexible to include, you know, things that happen and occur as on a timely basis. You know, there are impacts that occur. My front yard was flooded. There's, you know, I don't want to see my, the road paved, and it's unpaid at this point, and we're perfectly fine to let the water drain, and the animals have access through the wildlife corridor in the empty field that's across the lake. And so there needs to be current, contemporary, in the neighborhood, ability of people to participate in the decision-making. I have no idea where one-point-two-million, two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, was this open bid? You know, who decided what these costs are going to, what these projects are going to cost? My grandfather was a road engineer and helped to build Golden Gate Bridge and the Hetch Etchey Dam, and I feel like, you know, there needs to be, where's the landscaping? Where's the toilets? Where's the drainage? Where's the rocks and the riprap? Where's the protection for the streams? Where's the protection? We local people have a right to participate in these decision-making, and that's all.
All right. Unless there's anything further up here, I guess I'll call for the vote.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Mary Wallace.
Yes. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Now, I guess we have no enactment of ordinances, and now we are on the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, to anybody from the public? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving on, item six, building inspection activity reports and business license activity reports, we will accept those. Right to appeal, item seven, persons who are dissatisfied with decisions of the city council may have the right to a review of that decision by court. The city has adopted section ten-ninety-four-point-six of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to ninety days, the time within which the decisions of the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. All right. Item eight, commissions and agencies that meet as the planning commission, and we haven't done so. And now we're to item nine, city manager reports, recommendations.
The only thing that I would like to report on is that it looks like we will indeed have a springing-out-of-winter Music in the Park this year, and that is going to be held April twenty-eighth. It is going to be different than our fall festival, and that will just be one day, all day on April twenty-eighth, and it's going to be several bands, sort of a festival-style Bands in the Park. We have booked our first band, and that is One Grass, Two Grass, who is a very popular local bluegrass band, bluegrass jam band. They've performed at the pub a few times, they've sold out several festivals, they're really great, and hoping to fill out the rest of the schedule in the next couple of weeks, so looking forward to that. And I'm, we're also collecting sponsorships. If there are any businesses out there that would like to sponsor that event, this is not an event that is paid for by taxpayer dollars. We rely solely on private sponsorships for the Music in the Park, so if you're interested in sponsoring, give me a call. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Department recommendations?
It is free. It is absolutely free.
Administration, do we have anything from HR?
No.
Okay. And public safety?
Just really quickly, we're fully staffed now, and we were able to get our school resource officer, who started Monday, at the schools. Also, the staff and I are working on, and the city manager, working on the E O P. That's coming along really well, and we'll.
E O P stands for?
For Emergency Operating Plan, so when there's emergencies, declarations of war, floods, fires, local or national, we have a plan to have city staff, fire department, volunteers, et cetera.
And Scott, to be clear, we have one, but this is an update.
Oh, yes, we have one. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Jerry, because Jerry did the last one. This is an update on the plan, because it hasn't been updated in a while, so we're updating all the associated documents with it as well, and I'll put more in the city manager's newsletter about it.
Community development?
Good evening, council. Dusty Dooly, I'm your community development director. Put a bunch of information in the newsletter that hopefully you enjoyed reading. Just a few other things. The department has seen a dramatic increase in the number of folks that are interested in constructing homes in the city. I think that might be because of some of the proactive decisions that the council's made, the fact that we have some of the lowest building permit application fees in the state of California. We're one of the only places around here that has available water and sewer services. I'd like to think that we have a friendly staff that is anxious to try to help people move through the process. So what I'm trying to say is, please come and build houses in Willets. If you ask me what type of housing we need, I'll just say yes. Sometimes we do have some lots that are undersized or have other topographical challenges that make it difficult to build a reasonable project. Sometimes the council will be asked to approve something like a variance or something called a density bonus. The provisions for how one goes about seeking a variance or density bonuses is outlined in our zoning code, just for the benefit of the council with maybe future discussions with folks that might be talking to you about some of these tools. A variance is a tool to get a deviation from a property building standard. So for instance, I've got an undersized lot, and it's quite steep, and there's a very little buildable area, and so I can't meet your twenty-foot setbacks to property lines, so I'm going to get a variance to property lines to build my house. Not asking for something unreasonable. That is probably a situation that a variance has likely been set up for. I want to build over here on my property, because I want to get a better view. That would not be something you would typically support variance for, for instance. A variance does not tie to low-income housing. So, but what is tied to low-income housing is density bonuses. So for instance, we might have a certain zoning that says you can build a, have one residential unit per thirty-five-hundred square feet. So if the property's seven-thousand square feet, you can build two units. If you say, I will set a certain amount of units aside for low-income housing perpetuity, there is an opportunity for the city to grant them a density bonus. So in exchange for setting aside a certain percentage of the housing for low income, we then have the ability to approve a density bonus. The density bonus is tied to a number of things, but one of the things is the low-income housing. Variance not tied to it, density bonus is. Busy finalizing our grant to CalFire. This is for the urban, oh, sorry.
Yeah, well, just a comment on that. In the downtown area, especially if you had a project that was like gearing towards senior housing, would parking requirements be looked at as either a variance or as a?
That would likely fall into the variance scenario, right? And so you might look and say, well, okay, if it's set aside for seniors, maybe there's not such a demand for parking. A lot of folks are looking for, rely on alternative transportation or whatnot, and so that would maybe be a reason why you would loosen the parking requirements.
And do both of those come to the council as part of the planning commission action?
Yeah, staff is not allowed to approve the variances. Those always have to come in front of council. What we'll do with the development project is, is we'll look for the developer to build a development that's consistent with the city standards. If they're looking to deviate from the standards, we'll try to understand what those reasons are, and ultimately what we're trying to do is get a project together that works for them, that is closely tied into the city standards as reasonable, but then ultimately trying to get something that, you know, we feel that the council will want to support. Yeah, but ultimately, it's the council's determination to whether or not to grant those variances. Working hard on getting the finalization of our CalFire grant. Again, this is a grant to develop an urban forestry management program, as well as pay for a number of street trees. Deadline's Friday. That is coming along wonderfully. We're just putting the final touches on it. Our community partners have been excellent with assisting us and providing letters of support, so we feel like, again, we're putting together a very competitive project, and so we'll look forward to getting that submitted on Friday.
When is the anticipated response on that?
Later this year. I'm not sure exactly. Yeah, I think it might have been in some past reports, but I can get back to you on that. And, yeah, unless you had any other questions? Um, and, yeah, um, unless you had any other questions, I think everything else I had to share was in the, um, with the new council report there, or the city manager's update there.
Did you have anything?
Yes, I have a couple of things, thank you. Um, yesterday, a group of folks met, we had our first meeting for the Gray Race. We're really excited about coming to Willets, they're anticipating five to seven hundred people coming to our little town for about three and a half hours. So, um, we're moving forward with that. Like I said, we had our first meeting to kind of get ideas from the shifters of what they'd like to see. We are desperately looking for volunteers, so don't be surprised if I call you and ask you if you can help that day. Um, we're gonna have a meeting again in a couple of weeks, we haven't set the date yet, and we're just gonna continue to move forward with it. Airport day has been scheduled for August seventeenth. I'm meeting with the tenants tomorrow, Bill and I, and, um, going to get their input. They're very excited that we've asked them to actually have a meeting, give input of what they would like to see and like to do. So, I'll keep you updated on that. And last but not least, form seven hundreds are due by Friday.
This Friday?
This Friday. Thank you.
And, city council committee boards and agency reports?
Um, I attended the Caltrans ad hoc committee meeting last Tuesday, um, and, let's see, what did we learn? Um, Ms. Stephanie mentioned earlier that, uh, relinquishment has pushed back because of weather. Uh, April first is now the new date when, uh, work on the Sherwood interchange is to resume. Um, they're anticipating it to be finished up mid-October, which means that, um, November first is our new target date for relinquishment. Um, it's all weather-dependent, of course. They also anticipate being finished up with the Main Street portion of relinquishment, hopefully by July, hopefully before our Fourth of July celebration, Frontier Days. Um, that also was delayed by weather and basically the things they need to come back and do are finishing off the, grinding out of the piano keys that we've discussed before and doing some, I think, curb painting.
And restoring signs.
Yes, yes. Uh, let's see, uh, we did have a discussion with them about getting those as-built plans that they're supposed to give to the city to let us know where exactly utilities are in, along Main Street. We have electrical, irrigation and broadband. Um, city engineering and community development are waiting for those so we can, uh, start on our plan for the pavers and trees and things like that and our streetlights. Um, we should be getting the, uh, Main Street ones hopefully by this summer. I think they said they had ninety days or something after July to get those to us and then we'll get the final ones for the Sherwood interchange sometime February or March of next year. So, we'll be meeting again in May with Caltrans and hopefully they won't push us around too much.
What about the stoplights? Did they have any update on the, on stoplights?
Um, yes, we did ask them about stoplights. We're still trying to get some, um, historical data on what has cost them and what maintenance has been on the stoplights. There was some pushback, but it sounds like we're actually going to get that information. Um, so hopefully we should have that before the next meeting.
Thank you.
Larry, do you have?
I have MCOC. I went to MCOC on, I don't know what day it was, the fourth of, fourth of March, and it was about the, uh, call boxes on the side of the roads. Um, and we're going to try to get somebody else to try to fill, do the maintenance on them. And, uh, we just renewed their contract, the, the original contract for the call boxes and it was all about call boxes. Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to talk about Measure B?
What?
Want to talk about Measure B?
No, I'm gonna let you talk about Measure B.
Okay. Mitch?
Um, yeah, I was trying to figure out when this other meeting is, but, the, uh, EDFC is meeting this Thursday, which is tomorrow, seems like it's coming up, I think, at two o'clock in Ukiah, and Mendo Recycle, um, that's what I was trying to figure out. I believe it's gonna be the twenty-eighth in the morning here, but, uh, they're, they're definitely going to be meeting because the board is kind of trying to, uh, struggle with our lack of a general manager and with a proposal by CNS. I mentioned this last, last meeting, um, but, so, it's an important time to, uh, keep a, keep an eye out on our oversight of, of, uh, the garbage and recycling in our county.
Uh, Measure B, me and Larry went to the, Larry and I went to the last, uh, meeting, uh, week before, um, or the same day as our last council meeting, and it looks like, it sounds like they are maybe considering the Howard Hospital location again as part of the bigger picture. Uh, more to come, I guess they've, as they put it, they don't have a project yet, but it's, uh, it could come back. It's not like it's off the table, so, is that-
Yeah, it's close, it's, uh, there's just some, certain people on that Measure B committee that won't let that die, so I'll just go at, let it go at that.
Well, um, I heard that they are trying to have, um, a dedicated staff person to kind of be the project manager over the-
That was basically the outcome of that meeting, is that they voted to have a, to go and acquire a project manager. And with the idea, though, that they would like, um, a puff unit in the same, I guess at this point they're looking at maybe a puff unit and the crisis intervention and some of the other programs, and even, maybe even a trading center at the location. So, that's why the Howard Hospital, uh, location wasn't taken off the, uh, there. So, again, nothing has been officially decided, the, um, my conversation with the board supervisors is it still has to come back to them as a whole, so, it's, it's just something that we need to watch and listen and, again, I emphasized again that we, we just want to be part of that conversation as city of Willets, not just something that gets voted on and kind of thrown our way without any input, uh, not only us and the council, but the community at large. I, I did encourage them to hold a Measure B meeting here, um, in Willets for the benefit of our constituents here that we may want to attend and also for that matter those on the coast, doing something on the coast, but that's up to them as to whether or not they want to do that. I think the focus is that Measure B is an advisory committee to the board of supervisors. So, um, I also attended Lafco at the first Monday of the month that was born in as the, uh, Lafco commissioner again for another two years, so, um, and I did attend the League of Cities, uh, event last Friday in Ukiah, actually, March first, sorry, I take that back, and, um, basically there was a discussion with the California Public Utilities Commission, Energy Upgrade Program. They, uh, maybe something we should probably put on our website regarding the rate changes that are, looks like it's gonna be coming our way. So, I think what the gist of this is they're doing public information and it's gonna make our way to where, um, how they, how the utilities will bill, um, in our area will be based on, uh, certain usage and so they're gonna encourage folks to not use power during certain times and so the word is gonna be out there. You, I suspect you'll get something in your PG&E bills as, as time moves along, but they're also trying to do a, a concerted effort to get the word out as far as when you should be using your power or not using it, so.
If I could just piggyback off of that, um, regarding PG&E, uh, PG&E did a presentation on planned outages, um, a few weeks ago in Ukiah. Um, our fire chief was very concerned that the city of Willets was not included in that discussion because it would mostly affect our residents. Um, we reached out to PG&E and they are going to do a presentation here at city hall at the council meeting, the second council meeting in April, I believe that's April twenty-fifth or fourth, twenty-fourth. Uh, PG&E representatives will be here to give a presentation on planned outages and, um, I have been talking to Mark Westerberg, um, about the possibility of inviting school board members to this meeting as well, um, so that we can talk about that and if it's the Willet council to invite them to maybe do a co-meeting, um, to, to really talk about these PG&E planned outages.
Yeah, Stephanie, for the sake of everybody out here, the outages, we wouldn't be talking about just a two or three-hour outage, we'd be talking-
No, they're talking about forty-eight to seventy-two hours, uh, in a wind event, in a wind fire event, and, um, these could come at a moment's notice. It also, and so, the PG&E representative will come out to talk about, um, why they do it and the preparations for that, and not just in a wind event, but in case of an earthquake or, or, or some other natural disaster, how to sort of prepare for these planned outages. Um, they're pretty dramatic to lose power for two or three days, so.
If you have a question, if you want to come up here, help me. Stephanie, if you could state your name and-
Capilla Phoenix, thank you so much for all your work. The planned outages are electric and gas, or one or the other, both?
In my understanding, it is just electrical, um, but those questions, that's why the PG&E is gonna come and, and do a presentation, which I think is great because we just need to get the word out there on what this is and why and, and how to prepare for it and, um, all those good things. But I, in my understanding, it's because of the sparks in the power lines in a wind event.
The concern was, if you remember during the fires last July, St. Elina, for example, they shut the power off and there were concerns, some of the businesses that weren't geared up or didn't have generators, their refrigeration, a lot of food spoiled. So, having those, I guess our concern is we want to get the word out to our constituents out here because if you have a backup or maybe your refrigeration freezer could handle six hours versus, you know, three days.
Correct, correct.
You know, that you start making plans appropriately.
And, being unknowledgeable, is there any that you're aware of, reparation for loss of business?
Because my understanding, there wasn't any, I think they looked at it as a-
Yeah, PG&E has been very clear that, no, there is not. And that is something that I think the committee needs to tell them when they come and do a presentation because it's pretty outrageous.
You might want to also check with your insurance agent and see if you have business interruption.
Thank you.
Um, keep in mind, PG&E has also declared bankruptcy, um, and they're so, they are not paying their bills right now.
Thank you.
Nor their water bill to the city.
But it's something, you know, that we sit there and talk about individual community members being prepared for outages or, you know, being prepared that way and, and having things, uh, we're used to having our power or people with medical needs out there that they have some sort of backup plan. I know when we were talking about having the power out, my dad was still alive, we, we had oxygen tanks, but probably not prepared for three or four days of power being out, but, uh, so those sort of concerns. And obviously the hospitals and our, some of our residential care homes probably want to make those plans and some of those folks may already have some plans in place for that, so.
Did you just mention?
Well, um, just when you say planned outages, they aren't, um-
No, they're not.
Yeah, they're not scheduled, they're just, but, so if there is a high wind event that starts out and they could have just five or ten minutes and just go boom, we're turning it off.
It was my, um, I know last year, I think they said the following communities may have, and it was not really a, a big notice, but then, not every place, I think like, if I remember right, last year, they said Lakeport was gonna be one of them, and when I called over there, they told me that they did not during that period of time that they had announced, but a couple of the other communities were, so.
They have already done, experienced these outages.
Yeah, but like I said, I know for sure St. Elina because that made the, uh, the local news, uh, very useful, so. All right. Have a, did you have something?
Yeah, are we going on to item twelve?
Yeah, that's where we're going.
Um, so I actually, I forgot to report that Sonoma Clean Power, I'm the alternate, um, I did attend a meeting about a month and a half ago and then I wasn't able to attend the most recent one, but, um, they are dealing, uh, it's gonna be probably a year process at least with the impact of the bankrupt, the PG&E bankruptcy. And I guess there's a lot of unknowns around that and I am very curious to hear more about it. And in fact, Sonoma Clean Power is gonna be making a presentation to the WELL Energy Forum on this, March twenty-eighth. So, um, I, I think a lot of people in our community now have their electrical from Sonoma Clean Power and the more we find out about what they're offering, how you can, you know, use energy at the right times of the day to reduce, um, our impact on the system and, um, the different programs that are available from them. And, and maybe they'll explain a little bit about what's, uh, the potential impact of the PG&E bankruptcy as well, because we are now automatically opted in to having our electrical being provided by Sonoma Clean Power, but it still comes through the PG&E lines and PG&E still does the billing. So, there's a lot of, of changes coming down the pike. Um, so March twenty-eighth, the Energy Forum is gonna be at seven o'clock, it's a Thursday evening, at the, um, Willets Environmental Hub over there just south of Mariposa Market.
What day is that again?
Uh, it's a Thursday, March twenty-eighth, seven o'clock. And in addition to Sonoma Clean Power, we're gonna have, I believe, Aperson Energy Management Company, they provide, um, people with an analysis of their residence or business about how much leakage is happening, you know, where, where they could conserve, insulate, put ceiling, ceilings around the doors and windows, ways that people can save a lot of money and they provide that service. Uh, they test and they also do the energy upgrades and we'll have John Hascheck, we'll talk about what the county's doing about energy and, um, I hope somebody from the city, it might be me, is gonna talk about what the city's doing. And, um, we also have Keith Rottich, who is the director of the Renewable Energy Development Institute. He's been involved in energy conservation work for thirty years and also solar installations, very familiar with rebates available and funding available for people that want to do energy upgrades. That's March twenty-eighth. And the only other thing that WELL is also doing is, um, we're pending a, we're in the finalists, we're a grant from the community foundation to, um, continue and expand our paint-the-town projects, which we are, we will be coming to city council with some items that require encroachment permits from the city and from Caltrans, but we haven't heard yet how much funding we're gonna have available to do that.
Everybody else have a case? And any good and welfare? All right. I'm happy to see we have our school resource officer up and going, so.
Yes, he's up and going, he's at the schools. Can I say one other thing not related?
Go ahead.
Tomorrow, remember tomorrow is Friday.
All right. And, uh, we have no closed session, so if I could have a motion to adjourn.
Go to, go to chemies and get your pass.
Thank you.